Good morning, welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for August 13th, Thursday at 10:04. We're calling things to order. We would welcome any public comment at this time for items not appearing on the agenda. Seeing and hearing no one for public comment, we'll accept public comment under each agenda item. We will look for a motion to approve the minutes from our meetings on July 30th and August 6th for the Board of Commissioners.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 30th and August 6th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. For our first item under Personnel here and COVID planning and response, we have an item from the Tax Assessment Office. Margaret, is there anything you wanted to add for this position?
No, the work in tax assessment is continuing to increase and Mark Kellerman believes that it would be important to have Gerald Dan's assistance and therefore the reason for the request to bring him back from furlough.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Any questions for Margaret on this? Okay, hearing none, will there be a motion to approve the reinstatement?
Motion to approve the reinstatement of Gerald Dan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Margaret. Moving next into a presentation, we wanted to pause for a moment and get a review of where Airbnb specifically has their remittance of hotel tax throughout this year. And we were notified from the Happy Valley Venture Bureau, our Center County designated tourism promotion agency, to see where they're at. And we were notified by, again, the Happy Valley Venture Bureau, HVAB, that they were remitting $0 per month. And there were some questions about that. And so our treasurer, Colleen Kennedy, is with us this morning. And Colleen looked into this and we were able to get some information from Airbnb directly. And they did provide some data to us. And so we wanted to welcome Colleen for her to present some information. And then we, as a board, can have some discussions on this and we'll go from there. But Colleen, we will turn the floor over to you. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. So when everything shut down in March, I noticed that Airbnb was submitting zero tax payments. And what seemed even more odd is, so for March, they claimed no revenue and didn't pay any tax. And then for the next few months, they claimed revenue, then claimed all of their revenue as an exemption and paid zero tax, which seems very, very odd. Mike Pike put me in touch with Kelly Fay at Airbnb. The only records I had for contacts for Airbnb were for Avalara Tax, which is a third-party company that prepares the tax returns for Airbnb. So Mike put me directly in touch with Airbnb. And Kelly explained that basically their revenue is in the hole, and that's why they haven't been submitting any tax. To give more detail on that, the hotel tax works like a sales tax, meaning that the entity is not taxed. They collect tax from their customers and then they pass it on to us. And what was explained to us by Kelly is that they collect their payment and tax upfront. And so when they were faced with all these cancellations, it put them underwater and they had to refund all of the tax that they had collected already along with their revenues. And then she gave us a breakdown of what they show their carryover is. And so I'm going to share my screen right now and head over to... There we go. And you should be able to see right now. So for January and February, their remittances were pretty straightforward. What you're seeing here in columns F and G are what I have as far as what they reported. And then what you're seeing over in columns B and C is Airbnb's calculation. So starting in April, you can see that their tax basis over here, see, that's their taxable 35, they only claimed 39. They claimed all the exemption and paid nothing. So you can see back from March, they had way more cancellations, had to refund that money. And so they've got a running calculation of them being in the hole. I added a row here that shows the cumulative carryover. And it came out to what they gave us, which is here. So they're showing that they still have a credit balance based on hotel tax that they have had refunded. It's not in itself all that weird. We've had, when I came on in January, there was one operator who had overpaid their tax in 2019 and was carrying over a credit balance for a few months until they got caught up. So it's not unprecedented. It just seemed very, very weird. And their tax filing didn't reflect what Kelly Fay is now explaining after the fact. I still have questions for Kelly because, you know, go back to the screen sharing. You can see... Come on, there we go. Like for April, they claimed a tax basis of $95,000, but for their filing, they only claimed $39,000 and then exempted it all, which is not how exemptions work. In May, $281, $53,000 exempted all. So what she is claiming in their calculations doesn't match what they reported in any way, shape, or form. And it wasn't until we went after them that they actually bothered to give an explanation at all. So...
So Colleen, I had a question or two. Is it okay to ask them now?
Yeah, that's fine. Please do.
So I think, I think I would suggest that we would replicate what we did back in, I believe it was either 2013 or 2014, where Board of Commissioners at the time did a spot audit or contracted out for a spot audit to be performed on, I think it was about eight or nine overnight accommodations. And it was everywhere. I think we did some bigger ones. We did some medium-sized ones and some bed and breakfasts. And so I think that that would be, I would support us doing that with, you know, and we can do it for, we can do it for everybody.
Right.
Or we could just do it for Airbnb. I don't know if we would have to do a more, we'd have to do a mix just so that we're not, you know, going after Airbnb. I think, I think that this is, this is, they're sort of making up their own rules. And I appreciate, I appreciate from a business side of things, the trouble that they're in or the, you know, it's really affected their industry. However, I don't, the exemption, like you're talking about, is really if somebody from the government or somebody who, you know, you can claim exemptions, but it is, it is a little fishy. And we were, we've never gotten any certainty or assurances of the numbers that they're giving back to us or that they've been remitting to us were correct. There's been some discrepancies from some data that the, the HVAB has versus what they provide to us. So I would support some sort of audit being done on them. Again, if we need to do others as well, that's, you know, that might be the case. But I would hope that maybe either, I don't know if Jason through Chuck would have that, you know, in his records. I don't know if Rich had any in his records. I've looked at through my records and emails, I can't find it. I don't know if Commissioner Dershowitz would have anything. So, yeah.
I did see one in my office. I would have to look for it, but I know that I did see a hotel tax audit report in the office. So I would just have to track that down. I also spoke with Jason recently about doing in-house hotel tax audits on a regular basis. And he seemed open to that. I don't know if Jason wants to speak to that right now, or if he's not prepared to, that's fine too. But it's a conversation that Jason and I have had, if that might get added into the audit rotation schedule.
Yep. It's going to get added into the rotation, especially in light of this report today too on Airbnb. And just for my, my own question on it is, do we know how other counties are reacting or responding to Airbnb? Because I'm sure we're not the only county in this boat right now. So I'm just curious, if we reached out to other counties to see how they're either addressing it or whatever.
Yeah, well, apparently other counties have been receiving tax because, you know, like all of us, I'm on the county email list for treasurers. I mean, all of us are on our own for our own positions. And I brought this up, and several counties reported that they've still been getting their pay from Airbnb. Only one or two counties pointed out that Airbnb hasn't remitted anything for the last few months. And they hadn't gotten any explanation. I don't know that anyone else has actually delved into it as much as Mike and I have yet. So...
Yeah, Jason, my two cents on this is, I think we as a, you know, when you think about students not returning, graduations not occurring, Arts Fest not happening, I think there probably was a lot of, a lot of people who, when you think about it typically during the summer, it's, I can't find a place in State College, or I can't find a place in Bellefonte. It's just, everything's full. And so my thinking would be that there were a lot, a lot of people who were, who booked out. And, you know, they might have, you know, after Arts Fest in, in 2019, they might have booked it in August for 2020 saying, hey, I'd love to come back. Or we've got to get a spot for the graduation. We've got to get a spot for Blue and White. And they had to done that, you know, again, all set up. And then pandemic hits, they all cancel. And then where with other places, I don't know if there's as much pre-booking, you know what I mean, because of events. And so that's just, that's my, that's my two cents.
I'll add to that, that Airbnb is a bit unusual because they're collecting payment and tax ahead of the stay. Most operators don't collect payment and tax until their customer actually completes their stay. So they're in a bit unusual circumstance because they do it ahead of time. So they're refunding both the rental and the tax when they have a cancellation, which a lot of, most places don't do that. When they get a cancellation, there's no exchange of funds because no money has exchanged hands yet.
This is Steve. Go ahead.
Sorry, so I just wanted to chime in real quick on both of those points that, so that is true generally for the hotels and motels in the area for the tax, Colleen, to your point. And Mike, I do get where you're coming from there too. But for all the special events, which would have been Blue and White commencement, all those sorts of things, a lot of the hotels do collect payment and tax in advance, some a year in advance, some 30 days out and stuff. So we would, we would see impact there too, that may be a part of refunds and stuff. So that might be a bigger picture than just Airbnb on this tax collection, that there may be other impacts. Because Arts Fest would have been collected by some of the properties last year when people booked, some 30, 45 days out, some 90 days out. Same with the Happy Volley, volleyball tournament, which would have been in May around Memorial Day. So a lot, generally, yes, they don't collect, but on all special events, they do collect payment. Some, like I said, 30 days, some a year in advance. So we may see further impact yet, especially with football season coming around. So I don't think any of the hotels have made decisions on what they were doing with refunds yet. So this may be a bigger issue going forward.
Two, two points on that. I'm sorry, Steve, I'm just going to address this. And then please let's give Steve the floor. But you may or may not know that both the Penn Stater and Nittany Line Inn are both closed right now. They just, they just shut down and they're not operating at all. So I don't know how that's impacting cancellations and whatnot. The second point is that our hotel tax revenue is down by about 90%. We are getting about 10% of what we got last April. So it's already really heavily impacted. Airbnb is the only operator that I'm aware of where it's been a weird situation where they've had so many cancellations that were collected upfront that they're now working on, in the, in the red. So I'm sorry, Steve, go ahead and make your point, please.
Well, I'm just doing like math in my head. And if they, if they have one room, I don't understand how they can be zero. I don't understand it at all. Because even if you have all these cancellations, that's great, but you still have positives in there. You still have rooms being rented and they have to be accounted for. And I don't see how you can account for, for rooms that are, that are rented by rooms that have been canceled. I mean, you still have a net positive eventually. Am I correct?
Eventually, but they're telling us, they're telling us they haven't got to that eventually net positive yet. They're still net negative. And I'll just repeat that this is, that this is tax that they have already collected and paid to us. And then we had to refund back to the customer.
Okay, I mean, I appreciate that. I just, at some point, that it's got to, it's got to even out though. They can't just keep going and going and going at a net negative because they are renting rooms.
Right. Well, yeah, that's exactly right.
And Steve, a part, a part of that is what it looks like happened was...
I'm going to bring this up.
Am I am mute? I might be on mute. No, I'm not. No, I was...
I'm bringing this up again.
Well, Steve's, Commissioner Dershowitz is on the phone, Colleen, so he wouldn't...
Oh, right. I'm so sorry. That's right.
That's okay.
But...
But do you, do you have, Colleen, on yours, do you have, do you have January and February's bookings for them on yours?
No. Because they only gave the information in their email from March forward, because that's what I had asked about.
Or I guess what I would say is, can you, can you replicate that based upon the revenue that they remitted?
I can't.
Because, well, and let me say this for Steve. So what it looks like happened in March is they had $1 million worth of cancellations. So that equaled $50,000 in negative hotel room tax in, just for that month. And then they had cancellations in April, May, and June. That total 11, 27. You're talking about $80,000 in negative, in cancellations. They've only had, it looks like $60,000 of bookings. So their argument is that over the last four months, March, April, May, June, those, those 120 days, they, they booked $60,000 of hotel room tax, but they've had $80,000 in cancellations. So at the end of June, that they still have a negative of 20,000. That's, that's their, but that's their contention. And so I don't know if we could do, so my suggestion would be doing an audit that looks at, is that true? You know, could we audit those numbers? And I don't know if we can do that mid-year. We may have to wait. Well, but no, that the, we could always do it on a fiscal year for the HVAB, which runs from, you know, July 1st to June 30th. So maybe we could do that. But, so that's one thing is doing an audit. Second thing is, you know, getting some clarity on what's the best practice for a hotel to do that. And I think that might not be a bad thing for us to look into, to that we can give clarity to all the people who are remitting taxes to you, Colleen. You know, I think that wouldn't be a bad thing. So again, I don't, I, those, that is my suggestion at this point, but we can still discuss and ask some questions on this.
Yeah. And also further clarify to Steve that, and I can email you the spreadsheet, Steve, if you'd like to look it over and see, they are catching up. They are, in March, there were so many cancellations and they were very underwater. And it's getting less and less so cumulatively over the last few months. So they are reaching that equilibrium that you're talking about. But that hasn't happened in March, April, May, June. So it is catching up, but it's not there yet.
Yeah, they've got to be catching up because unless they took a lot of money for bookings in this fall, I mean, they should be through the major season at which they had already had reservations and cancellations.
Yeah, apparently they still are getting cancellations according to the calculations they sent to us, or whatever that's worth.
Well, and think about it this way, where they might be doing, so when things canceled, the cancellations in March might have been for events in April or May, graduation, Blue White. Cancellations that we're seeing in May may have been for Arts Fest. There may still be cancellations that would be coming for the football season. Okay? So I'm, I mean, that's just my sense. I think you might have had people who paid well in advance. And what Airbnb is doing is they're saying, they might be saying to their clients, don't, or we're not going to let you cancel until 30 days prior. There might be a clause in there that says you can't cancel, or you as a client can't cancel 30 days prior to an event. That's allowing Airbnb to have more cash flow instead of just sending all the money right now. I don't know. So my, I think my concern primarily is that we're going to see them just run up a negative deficit and not, not remit any more taxes when legally they should be remitting taxes because they're collecting them. So, again, they're making up the rules as they go along. That's my sense.
Yeah.
So let's be clear. So they are collecting money in advance and paying it before the stay is complete.
Yes.
That's their business model.
At least, right.
Well, Steve, and that's a great, that Steve, that's an amazing point. That's what they're claiming now. That is what they're claiming now, which I think is a little, I think it's cute on their end. We don't know for sure if they, when they were remitting things. Again, we don't have any, you know, because we remember last year, they put out a press release saying that they brought in $2 million for, you know, people who live here for the Ohio State game or Michigan game, something like that. And we're looking at our numbers and saying, well, we're not seeing those hotel tax receipts for that. And now all of a sudden, they're claiming, oh, no, 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 the way we do it is we remit when they book. So again, it's very, I'm just saying, it's fishy.
It's...
It is, it is.
And I don't think an audit will get you where you need to go.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I think...
It's not going to be any clearer.
Well, it will because you'll actually be able to ask them about, you'll actually be able to see the records of their collection, hopefully, and match it up to what they're reporting.
Yeah, Jason, what would that look like? I mean, I mean, it would, it would, it should be where you're basically somebody goes in and says, we want to see the receipts that Airbnb has for these days. How many, how many nights occurred, how many stays occurred, et cetera. I mean, it could be that, it should be that in depth. They may fight that, but it at least puts them on record saying, we're not going to turn this over. I think that's ultimately what we're, you know, could be talking about here.
Yeah.
Well, unless you audit Airbnb at...
Yeah, because you would be...
And they're not going to give you that data. Because even if you audit a couple of their, their destinations, it's not going to be a complete picture. And they'll say, well, okay, this, this is not representative of the, of the bigger picture here.
Yeah, but I think, I think if we, Colleen, you talked about that third-party entity?
Well, I think that's, go ahead.
No, you talked about that third-party entity. What's their name?
It's Avalara Tax. And I mean, I'll let Jason speak to this because auditing is his thing. But having been an auditor, what you do is you basically request all the records that support the numbers that they claim on their filing. So they would have to show you the numbers of bookings. They would have to show you their tax calculation. They would show you, they would have to show you how they arrived at the numbers that they put on their form. And I mean, saying that they won't provide it is simply an assumption. It's not a given fact. So, and it would be of Airbnb. It wouldn't be of, you know, the individual homeowner. Because the individual homeowner is not the operator of record. Airbnb is the booking agent that is of record and is collecting and submitting the tax.
They're not going to give you that data. I can tell you right now.
Well, Steve, we won't know until we ask. And I know, serving on the CVB board...
I know, right? Don't, don't...
Very frustrating to them that there's all these news articles about the huge amounts of money that people are making in Center County, running their homes out through Airbnb. And the funds that the CVB and the county are receiving aren't even vaguely close.
They're going to tell you that they have no, they have no contractual agreement to provide information.
Well, that's, that's nice, Steve. We have a law that says that you have to remit your tax. And if you don't remit your tax, the charge is $100 per day, per room.
And Steve, just to clarify, are you not, are you not necessarily, are you, are you basically saying to us, this is a fool's errand? I mean, I would hope, you're not saying that we should just let Airbnb...
No, I don't, I don't know. Do we have the teeth to enforce this? I guess that's, that's the question that I have. I mean, I'm all in favor of making them pay. Don't get me wrong. I'm just looking at it. What enforcement capability does the law provide for us in this instance with Airbnb? Not individual, not individual destinations, but actual Airbnb.
Um, well, are you talking about, are you talking about at the county level? Because we have our own ordinance, our own ordinance, which says if you're a booking agent, you have to file with the county as a booking agent. And then as a booking agent, you are required to collect and remit the tax. And that's all in our ordinance. So I'm not sure where, where the question is coming from. I'm sorry.
Well, no, I think that's a good answer. That means that if, if they are found to be not remitting a tax, we can levy that, that penalty and take them to court for it. I mean, I think the, you know, $100 a day for them is, I think, you know, you know, not necessarily, you know, that's more towards a B and B or a motel. But from my standpoint, I think it's a first step in getting them on the record to show that they're not willing to, you know, submit to that, to an audit. But I think, again, I think it's an opportune time to do it. And, you know, that's, that's, that's my, my take on it, at least to start the process. I mean, I don't think we're saying today, do an audit. But I do think that we're hearing from the HVAB, Mark, you serve on the board. And I think they're asking us to please look into this. And if we get the answer back that Airbnb says you can't have the records, you know, we have, we'll then take a, we'll then look at our options at that point. But I think, I think it's a good first step. So maybe to clarify, it would be with enough, there's, there's a questions here where if we can look at, if Colleen, Jason, you know, you're willing to take a look at what we did a few years ago with the audits of the overnight accommodations at that point, and maybe come back with a recommendation for how we could proceed in this instance. That might be very, that would be, that would be what I'd be looking for if there's consensus from the commissioners on that.
Now, I guess the question I had was our, our ability to enforce, in other words, if they say, hey, hey, Center County, you know, we're not going to provide you with this. We have no, we have no intention of doing that. I was just curious what the law, what our ordinance, if there is an enforcement component to it that says, we are going to compel you to do X, Y, Z.
Um, in our ordinance, it basically says the treasurer has discretion to do what they need to do to enforce the ordinance. There's not a specific thing about providing records or how to do that. I mean, I get, I'll defer to...
Can't enforce a 5% tax on revenues unless people can show you their revenues and you have the ability to audit them.
Yeah. And just as an aside to supplement what Mark was saying, there's not just... And I'm, just as an aside to supplement what Mark was saying, there's not just the $100 a day penalty if there's a finding against the operator. There's also 1.5% penalty per month and interest.
And that's the current ordinance. We could always re, we could always take a look at that. I don't know if the legislation allows a maximum or minimum, but we could, we could look at that.
Yeah, but our current ordinance allows for quite a bit of penalty, 1.5% interest per month, plus the interest, plus that $100 per day if there's a finding. So.
Is it, is it, I forget, is it Center County or is it the state that has the agreement with Airbnb for the collection of the tax?
I'll defer to Mike.
Yeah, so the state, the state signed an agreement, I think it was two or three years ago, which basically said to Airbnb, give us a million bucks a year or something like that. Give us a million bucks and we won't come after any of your back, what you owe us backwards. And then in addition to that, they, when they, when they passed the, the new hotel tax law, it in, or no, it was not the hotel tax law. It was the law that basically said online booking agents would have to collect the fee. So that's like the expedias and all that.
Right.
And then Airbnb woke up one day in early 2019 and said, we're going to start remitting to Center County. We don't, so we do not have an agreement with Airbnb. They just woke up one day and said, we're going to start to remit. I think it's because they looked at the new law that covered online booking agents and said, okay, let's start, let's start paying because we're really making, we're making some dough in State College and Center Region and Center County and the surrounding area, based on the football games. So let's start to not get too greedy with this and remit at least some. But there is, yeah, there's no, no agreement with the county and the, and Airbnb. So unless they filed with you. I think they filed with you, right, Colleen? Did they file with you in terms of their paperwork? But that's not an agreement.
Yeah, let me double check.
Yeah, that's not, that's not, that's not necessarily an agreement.
Yeah, they registered. They registered as a booking agent.
Right.
Which just, just, the registration form just requires that they provide their information. There's no agreement, except that they're filing in accordance with our ordinance, which lays out the guidelines.
So before I make a motion that, to ask Colleen, or to ask our treasurer and our controller to provide a recommendation to us regarding how best to do an audit, is there any reservations on doing that, Jason or Colleen?
No, not at all.
And I would venture to say that the last time that was done, we probably weren't collecting from Airbnb as it was. So it's probably worthwhile now again, anyway.
Okay, all right.
That's right.
So I'll make that motion. I'll make the motion to request a recommendation from the controller and the treasurer regarding how best to audit Airbnb. And if it, so I'll, I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this?
Uh, what's the timeline for this recommendation?
I think we'll leave it up to you. I mean, it'd be better sooner, excuse me, sooner rather than later, but whatever you're comfortable with, that would be terrific. Yep. And you can let Margaret know when you're ready to present that and we'll go from there.
Sounds good. And someone had a comment just now.
Yeah, so we are in, we are in final discussion before we look, we take a vote. So yes, any final discussion?
So this is Travis, and I just wanted to comment, because I talked to Rich about this last year in 2019. He said that the secret agreement between the Commonwealth and the Airbnb prohibits the county from auditing Airbnb. I don't know where he got that information from, but that's what he told me. And that's why Chuck had forwarded me a couple of emails that other counties have done audits on hotel tax collectors, and Airbnb is exempt from them. I don't know why. They said that agreement's not subject to written or anything, nothing's posted. Rich didn't have a copy of the contract, so I don't know how he got that information. But that's what I know about it from my discussion with him earlier.
Okay, so Travis, you have that in black and order, or is this just a conversation?
I have the audit from the other counties, but the conversation with Rich was just a conversation in person.
No, I know, but I mean, okay. Okay, I think we can Google that pretty quickly and look at the text and see if they're exempted from an audit.
Unfortunately, the state has classified that as confidential. All we do know is that Airbnb, in the other governments they have had contracts into this with, has usually put in requirements limiting the audit powers of the governments. The Commonwealth has been on record, Department of Revenue pointed out, and they quote, they never waive its right to audit. So Rich must be under the impression that they restricted our audit ability, but the state can go in and audit Airbnb as a whole.
So if we would go, so if we would go look for an audit for Airbnb, and they say, we can't per this agreement, that sets up another angle, which is, well, we don't know that, we don't, we didn't sign on to this agreement. This agreement doesn't exist. So we would, it would be even more of a shining a light on how Airbnb is allowed to practice these sort of, or is able to operate in this regard. So again, as, I'd hope the controller's office and the controller would support this still at this point.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that feedback, Travis, on that, that, that point of clarification. Okay, any other further discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion is carried. Okay. Appreciate it, Colleen. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, for our personnel items, we have one from our Office of Aging. It's consider approval of the appointment of Maria King, full-time agent care manager, too. Is there a motion to approve?
All right, give me, give me a sec.
Sure.
Motion, motion to approve the appointment of Maria Krug? Crew? Anyway.
Crew, yeah.
Crew, all right. Motion to, motion to approve the appointment of Maria Crew.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. Moving into the next item here, we have an item for emergency communications. This would be to consider approval of the personnel requisition for full-time Director of Emergency Communications. And before we look for a motion, we are grateful and thankful and so appreciative of Dale's work. We're going to be doing many things. His retirement date is at the end of the year, so he's giving us a large runway to go, go with this. And we, so we, we're going to do some special things to celebrate him and the work he's done for the county over as many years here. But this would be formally putting that job description out there, or I should say, the job opportunity out there. We know he has a good team down there. We know a lot of good people are going to apply for this position, and we're excited about that. And so we look forward to that. But just an initial big thank you to Dale for all the work he does on this.
Exactly, Mike. I've been, now that I'm on the statewide 911 board, I've been working very closely with Dale on a number of issues, and I'm, just enjoy working with him. He's, he's always up to speed on the latest information. And really, his whole team down there is very, very solid and very happy that they all work for the county.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, all right. So we would look for a motion then.
Motion to approve the personnel requisition for a full-time Director of Emergency Communications.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Comments? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. For our correctional facility, we have four items. The first one is the personnel requisition for full-time record specialist. The next one is a full-time requisition for a correctional officer. The next one is for a full-time kitchen supervisor. And the next one is for a temporary on-call occasional senior advisor. So we'd look for a motion to approve those four items.
Motion to approve the four items for the Center County Correctional Facility.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. Moving into a non-personnel items, for our Children and Youth Services Office, we have our fiscal year 2021 to 2022 Children Youth Needs-Based Budget. We have also the Child Welfare Information System, or also known as C-WIZ, data sharing agreement for the period of October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2021. And we also have the quarterly report for the period of April 1st through 2020 through June 30th of 2020. And so I think we want to, so Natalie-
Approve that today, don't we?
That's correct. Yeah, I think, I think this would, this, this may have just been copied over, so not a worry here. So just so we, yeah, so on, so, okay, so we've got those three items. We'd look for a motion to approve them, all three of them today.
Motion to approve the three items for Children and Youth Services, which includes the 2021 to 2022 Children and Youth Needs-Based Budget, the C-WIZ Data Sharing Agreement, and the quarterly report from the period of April 1st to June 30th of the current year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And Natalie, just to double check, this, they need us to ink this today, is that correct?
Yes, you, you've already taken care of this and it's ready to go to them this afternoon.
Oh, excellent. Super. Okay, great. All right. So we're good on that front. Okay. Any further discussion on these CYS items? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. For our next item, we have an elections contract here. And I wanted to, we wanted to double check to see if Joyce was on the line by chance. We have a few phone numbers and guests that have dialed in, but I didn't know if Joyce had joined us for this contract. Okay, just to double check. But, okay, so at our elections board meeting on Tuesday, we had discussed this at length and had a good discussion regarding this. But if anybody is joining us today who is curious about this, the, the big purpose behind this, we are expecting upwards of 40,000 to 45,000 ballots that will be requested through the mail-in process, either an absentee ballot or a mail-in ballot. And the logistical challenge of getting those ballots out in a timely fashion, we could do it, but it would basically be the, one of the only things we would be doing in the elections office from, for, when we get ballots printed all the way until right before the election. So this organization, Midwest Presort Mailing Services in partnership with RBM, provides a solution that is used by Allegheny County and also Westmoreland County, previously Mercer County here in Pennsylvania. And to give an example, if we would have, let's say, 20,000 ballots requested at the, on the first day or throughout the length of time leading up to the first day when we print the ballots, it would probably take our office several days, if not maybe a week or two weeks, to package them, get them sorted, and get them out. Midwest can do this turnaround in about two days and can have it back out in the mail in three days. And to get 20,000 ballots out in less than 72 hours and mailing them out is a tremendous, tremendous help to us. It will make sure that our elections office is focusing on making sure that we have in-person voting available, make sure that we can have a lot of good election services leading up to Election Day as well. So we really appreciate the partnership we're going to have with RBM and Midwest. And this is again, going to enhance the security, enhance the opportunity for people to vote in this upcoming election where we know there's going to be a record turnout. So I just wanted to add those comments. I know we've all talked about those at previous meetings, but it's important if anybody else was joining us or watching this recording, that they appreciate how we came to this decision. And, but again, we're appreciative of this partnership. But I'll, I'll leave those comments there. If there's any other comments before we look for a motion, we'll certainly accept them at this point. Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we would look for a motion to approve the agreement with Midwest Presort Mailing Services.
Thanks. Yep, Mike, that was a good summary. So I will make the motion to approve the agreement with Midwest Presort Mailing Services, Inc.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion is carried. Okay. And then facilities management, Margaret will turn this item over for you to, for some context.
Okay, thanks very much. As we approach the completion of the renovations at the courthouse, we need to provide some blinds, some shades for a couple of different rooms. And so we have a quote from Top to Bottom Interiors for the amount of $2,336. And this would be part of our, the completion of our renovation project in the courthouse. This was not approved as, previously as part of the courthouse renovation, so it needs to be approved by the Board of Commissioners separately, considered and approved separately.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Any questions, feedback on this?
Margaret, is that considered a capital expense or is that out of the general fund?
I would consider it a capital expense as part of the courthouse renovation project.
Thank you. Okay, all right.
It could come from general fund if you would prefer to take it from our general fund, but typically we package this up under the capital.
I was just more curious. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on this item? Okay, hearing none, other, we look for a motion.
Motion to approve the purchase and installation by Top to Bottom Interiors.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Margaret. For this next item, we have a letter of support from supporting CPIs, Community Facilities, Direct Loan Requests from the U.S. Department of Ag. They reached out to me, and it's basically just a very straightforward letter of support that we would all look to sign. And it would be to support, again, the construction of their Health Sciences Building. They are putting together this loan package by the end of the week, so tomorrow. And so Natalie, if you're, if you're, if you weren't planning on going to the office, I'd be more than happy to go in later today, print this out, put it on the front, you know, ledge there, and we could all sign it. But if you were going to be in today, we would leave that up to you. But essentially, this would, this would be for that. So any, any feedback, comments, questions on this?
None.
Hearing none, will there be a motion?
Motion to approve the letter of support to the Central Pennsylvania Institute of Science and Technologies, Community Facilities, Direct Loan Requests from the U.S. Department of Agriculture.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. And Natalie, you can just let me know offline if you'd like me to come in. I'd be happy to do that. All right, going into discussion items, Margaret will turn it over to you for this request from the Jana Marie Foundation.
Yes, thank you. The Jana Marie Foundation is planning to proclaim September as Suicide Prevention Month in Center County, and September 10 specifically is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Day. And as they have done in years past, they are asking for permission to use the steps of the Center County Courthouse for a special suicide prevention rally. They're asking to use the location on Tuesday, September the 8th. And typically, we would approve this just because it meets all of our criteria for use of county property and so forth. But given the COVID-19 guidelines around size of groups and so forth, I wanted to just double check with the Board of Commissioners to make sure that this is something that you would approve. Again, it's Tuesday, September 8th. Marissa says that she- approve. Again, it's Tuesday, September 8th. Uh, Marissa says that she, uh, thinks that there could be 50 to 60 people in attendance. She can't be quite sure because, uh, people sort of come and go at these events. It would be around noon time. And as in years past, the Board of Commissioners would be asked to also give remarks. Just needed some feedback from you all about how you would like to handle.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Uh, any feedback, uh, thoughts on this? It's, it's a great, I mean, it's a great, great organization and we want to support them as much as possible. Uh, but I think we've been really leading the charge, uh, and being part of leading the charge when it comes to countywide about being mindful of not gathering in groups, uh, doing physical distancing, masking, even though it's, um, it's outside, uh, it is, it's still on our property and we want to make sure that they're, um, um, you know, we want to make sure that, that we're, we're cognizant of this. So we just wanted to, uh, bring it to everybody's attention.
Yeah, it sounds fine. Great group. And if they're not going to be anywhere near 250 people for an outdoor event, that sounds fine to me.
It's fine.
Yeah, I think, I think the, um, I think the caveat would be to, um, uh, we, I, I would like us to require masking, um, uh, require, you know, the physical distancing and, uh, limit it, limit the participants as much as possible, I think is important. Um, and if Marissa could also, you know, um, make, make those mentions or make mention of that at the, um, you know, in the, in the flyers or invitations, I think that's important. And then also at the event as well, uh, we should ask her to make some sort of statement about please being mindful of, uh, masking and, um, physical distancing. I think that's important. Um, I, I want, we're allowing them to celebrate, use, use the steps, but also we want to be, we don't want to be, um, not practicing what we preach. And so I think it's, it's important for us to, you know, ask them to please make that a part of the event. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Margaret. Okay. Um, coming into, uh, the, we do have an executive session scheduled for today, but we were going to do a little bit of a discussion on the, uh, county relief block grant, I do believe. Uh, so in terms of the scheduling for that, uh, we, what, uh, do we, do we want to do executive session now and then come back into session for the county relief block grant? Or what's the, what's the best way for us to handle that? Margaret, do you have any thoughts?
We do have some other, uh, individuals joining us for the executive session today scheduled for 11:00. So I might recommend that we, right, go into executive session and then come back, uh, so that we have a little bit more time and aren't so rushed on the county relief block grant conversation.
Okay. That, that makes, that makes a lot of sense. Um, and in terms of, uh, uh, coming back into session, uh, it would be still in the same blue jeans call. So if anybody wanted to, uh, you know, join us back for the meeting, I don't think, there might not be as many individuals from the public who have joined us today, but if you have, what we'll do is we're going to lock them, we're going to go, uh, into executive session and we can ask you to, uh, leave the call and then we'll lock it. Um, but then what will happen is when we unlock the meeting, you'll be, you'll be joined back in. So you can, you'll basically be put on hold. Uh, so, uh, if you'd like to stick around for that as well, but any, any members of our staff, we, we will, or our team, we can send you a text, uh, to let you know, uh, when that would, would occur. So, um, uh, what we would do at this point is look for, oh, I'm getting, I'm getting word that executive session is on another link here. So, um, all right. So, uh,
So Commissioner Pipp, we could leave this open and people could keep this line open and then the, uh, commissioners would jump off this and, and dial into the executive session.
That's a great point. Natalie, are you able to stay? Natalie Smith, are you able to stay on this line, um, until we're done?
Um, I believe so. I was going to leave here shortly to go to the office, but I can leave.
Oh, okay.
Leave my laptop up.
Hi, this is Mary Kay. I'm happy to stay on if that would help anyway.
Thank you, Mary Kay. That would be terrific.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Uh, thank you, Mary Kay. And so, uh, we'll look for a motion to go into executive session. And this is to discuss, Margaret?
It's a security matter.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, motion to go into executive session on a security matter at 59.
I will, uh, I'll second it.
Second, second. I'm sorry. I didn't, I have it on mute. I'm sorry. Second.
Oh, no, not, not to worry. All right. Uh, Mr. Higgins, seconded by Commissioner Dershowitz. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.